To order, we ask, as we call this meeting, to order if you have a cell phone, if you put it on silent, vibrate, or off will be greatly appreciated. We would be led in prayer by Madam Clerk followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk?
O God of might, wisdom, and justice, through whom authority is rightly administered, laws enacted, and judgment decreed, assist us, we beseech thee, that the City Council may be conducted in righteousness and be imminently useful to thy people over whom we preside, amen.
Amen. I declare the presidency to be live by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the origin of the first law.
Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Here.
Jacobs?
Present.
Mayor Kirkland?
Present.
Move for the bid of minutes. So move. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
At this time, before we go into a public comment on Ash and Islands only, do we have any veterans in room if there are, would you please stand? I expect, would you please come on? We just want to say, as Bloomberg, I mean, just want to say on behalf of Mayor and Council, we want to honor and thank you for all your commitment and dedication to our country. Freedom has never, ever been free and never would be, but it's because of persons like yourselves that put yourselves on the line, the front line, to protect persons like us each and every day. We are able to enjoy the fruits of freedom here in our community, in our country. And if I may, if I do it wrong, let me just tell you, I salute you all. Move. All right, move. We salute you both. I don't think we can ever recognize our veterans and their families for allowing them, for just the opportunity, allowing them to serve the capacity that they do to keep us safe, so thank you once again. At this time, we will open up the microphone for a couple of comments on agenda items only, so there's person that had personal persons. We've got personal persons that have comments, concerns on agenda items only, they put their microphone, state their name, their address, and their concerns or comments. Hearing or seeing them, Madam Clerk?
Resolution, whereas the following individuals have requested a handicap parking zone. Number one, Sherry Redd, 226 East 23rd Street, Chester, PA, 19013. Number two, George Michael Kaiswitz, 3353 Carter Lane, Chester, PA, 19013. And number three, Alfreda Solomon, 155 West 21st Street, Chester, PA, 19013. Whereas after a thorough investigation by the Department of Streets and Public Improvements, it has been determined that the aforementioned individuals have met all of the required criteria and have a need for said handicap parking zone. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize appropriate city officials to install a handicap parking zone in the 200 block of West 21st Street, and the 3300 block of Carter Lane, and in the 100 block of West 21st Street in the City of Chester.
So move.
Standing.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby ratify the appointment of Harriet Ward to the position of Secretary, Department of Public Affairs, effective November 5, 2019, with all benefits at the salary as provided in the annual appropriation ordinance. Said employee has successfully completed the 60-day probationary period.
So move.
Standing.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby appoint Jamar Daniels to the position of Violence Prevention Mentoring Program Manager, Department of Public Affairs, effective November 18, 2019, at a rate of $21.54 per hour with medical benefits. Further, the position will end when the grant ends in July of 2021 unless funding is secured.
So move.
Standing.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby appoint Nasira Leach to the position of Violence Prevention Mentoring Case Manager, Department of Public Affairs, effective November 18, 2019, at the rate of $20.52 per hour with no benefits, not to exceed 18.75 hours per week. Further, the position will end when the grant ends in July of 2021 unless funding is secured.
So move.
Standing.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby appoint Plaid and Gathers to the position of Violence Prevention Mentoring Case Manager, Department of Public Affairs, effective November 18, 2019, at the rate of $20.52 per hour with no benefits, not to exceed 18.75 hours per week. Further, the position will end when the grant ends in July of 2021 unless funding is secured.
So move.
Standing.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the Chester redevelopment authority owns various properties throughout the City of Chester, and whereas the City of Chester is the successor in interest to the Chester redevelopment authority, and whereas the City of Chester no longer and/or has ever used the following properties for municipal purposes, and whereas the City of Chester desires to return these properties to productive use. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize the transfer of the following properties owned by the City of Chester to the Chester redevelopment authority of the City of Chester for marketing and sale. 204 Franklin Street, portfolio number 49-06-00863-00, and 206 Franklin Street, 49-06-00864-00. Further, that it does hereby authorize appropriate city officials to execute all documents necessary to complete this transfer.
So move.
Standing.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize appropriate city officials to prepare a request for proposals for services assessment and location and scheduled study for the City of Chester. Further, that it does hereby authorize the city clerk to advertise for the aforementioned notice.
So move.
Standing.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, whereas the City of Chester entered into agreement L 00188 with Trans Systems Corporation, or known as Trans Systems Corporation Consultants, to provide design services for the Lloyd Street Bridge. And whereas, City Council approved change order number one on July 10, 2019, for additional design services to include complete design of additional retaining walls for bridge abutments and additional geotechnical and structural engineering work for an amount not to exceed $148,124.87. Whereas after additional review of the project, it has been determined that additional services are required. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that the appropriate personnel at the City of Chester have reviewed the technical proposal and approve of its use in the preparation of an engineering agreement. Further, said proposal is also known as supplement number two and consists of environmental testing of existing soils in amount not to exceed $93,083.3. Will the City be responsible for 5% of the cost?
So move.
Standing.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does authorize appropriate city official to prepare specifications for the sale of a 1993 International Truck for the City of Chester. Further, that it does authorize the city clerk to advertise for the aforementioned notice.
So move.
Standing.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby authorize appropriate city official, excuse me, the proper city official to submit an application to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for an LED lighting grant for the upgrade of existing streetlights not to exceed $175,000. Further, that it does hereby authorize appropriate city official to execute any necessary documents for said grant. Further, said grant is contingent upon final approval of the city solicitor.
So move.
Standing.
Are there any questions?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does approve and order payment for a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of the Council of Finance and is shown on expenditure approval list dated October 25th and November 8, 2019, attached hereto and made a part 0, subject to approval from the Department of Accounts and Finance.
So move.
Standing.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Bill number eight, first reading was on October 23, 2019. Ordinance number eight of 2019, and ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, amending Article 925 entitled Refuse Collection, Section 925.07, entitled refuse preparation for deposit or collection of the codified ordinances of the City of Chester to add a new subsection, 925.07B, requiring that any mattresses and/or box springs placed curbside for collection by the City or its sanitation hauler be barred for purposes of preventing the spread of bed bugs.
I move that he pass bill number eight on his last and final reading.
A second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Bill number nine, first reading was on October 23, 2019. Ordinance number nine of 2019, and ordinance, an ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, amending Article 107 entitled Assessments of the Codified Ordances of the City of Chester, Pennsylvania, 1978, to eliminate triennial assessments and to provide for annual assessments and an annual appeal of assessments, and to repeal all ordinances or partial ordinances inconsistent therewith.
I move that he pass bill number nine on his last and final reading.
A second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Jacobs?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
At this time, we have a couple of presentations, first one being Youth Explorers Program and Boy Scouts of America. Do we have anybody here from that?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, City Council. I'm glad to be before you all today with my colleagues and senior leadership team from Cradle Liberty Council, Boy Scouts of America. Today, we just wanted to tell you what we're doing in the City of Chester and also propose to you what we would like to do as far as expansion of our programs. Currently, through the work of Ash, the State Representative Kirkland, and the school district of Chester Upton, we were able to establish over eight programs of Cub Scouts as well as Boy Scouts, so I'm sorry, Scouts PSA troops within the City of Chester, three troops and six Cub programs. Now with that success, and also we have been hiring local residents to run those programs that we call program specialists, and we actually pay those individuals $20 an hour to work with young people in the City of Chester. So we're building that program, it's growing, and it's very successful at this point. Now we're about to expand, and I want to thank Councilperson Williams and Jacobs for giving me a few minutes just to offer opportunity to partner with a program called Exploring. Exploring is a subsidiary of the Boy Scouts of America, and that's a co-ed educational exploration program where we give young people the opportunity to explore different careers just to see if this is something that they want to pursue or maybe something that they don't. So what we have proposed, and luckily the Fire Commissioner was very receptive, who brought us to Councilperson Williams and Jacob to talk about Public Safety Explorer Post. And this Public Safety Explorer Post would be a partnership between the Fire Department from the City of Chester and the Police Department from the City of Chester along with us, the Cradle Liberty Council, where we give young people, young high school age students the opportunity to learn about public safety and the careers that they can get through that training. And the hope is that through this partnership that it improve the relationship with the young people in the City of Chester as well as inspire them to aspire to become the future police and fire or even EMT services here for the City of Chester. So you have your own homegrown young people becoming the future law enforcement, fire department, as well as EMT services for the City of Chester. So that's what we're proposing, that we would like to work with the leadership of the City as well as the public safety officers to develop that program to partner with the area of high schools within the City of Chester. Any questions?
Just want to say thank you for the interest that has been exhibited in our young people here in the community, Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. Is it just Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts?
We also have young ladies in our program now too, so we offer for both boys and girls.
Okay, very good. So we appreciate the effort and that's been put forth in working with our young people. We have been trying to talk, we go to the schools sometimes and try to talk up our Fire Department as well as our Police Department, and being like you said, homegrown in the community and raising up our new leaders. So we appreciate your presence here, we appreciate you working with our young people, and we appreciate the partnership that you've put together with both Councilwoman Williams and Councilman Jacobs. I don't think Councilman Jacobs was ever a Boy Scout, but...
Yeah, very cute. I'm gonna tell the story. And I started to tell, this is a true story, I tried to tell this in the meeting with you.
This story is not true.
The other day when we had the meeting, all, I mean, a lot of you all know that I grew up in the rural south, I'm talking about like when it was like way back in the day, horse, I mean, mules and wagons and outhouses, cotton cucumbers and tobacco, right? So we didn't have anything like the Boy Scouts down there, but somebody came through this little town, oh wait, I think y'all passed through that, John, this past week, and they said they were Boy Scout commanders or whatever, you know, adults are, and they had us to give money, my grandmother didn't have much money, so we given it to my cousins, given it, never came up with any uniforms, and that's why I like what you said, all this stuff is free, no uniform, no Boy Scout pamphlet, and then they were supposed to take us to Cape Hill River fishing, and they never showed up. Took out money and got out of there.
You gonna have that problem.
So anyway, again, thank you, I appreciate it, because another thing is I had tried to get started at academy with the school district where the kids would get, earn credits towards their graduation. Dr. Shannon and some other people were there, but we got very close to it, but it never happened. So I was glad that when I heard from Commissioner Rigby and Jack about your presence in town. Thank you much, and I'll talk to Dr. Vaughn, we gonna make it work.
I'm all right, thank you.
We hope that, yeah. It is awesome, it is awesome that you'll make the Boy Scout experience for Mr. Jacobs as an adult, a lot better experience, appreciate it.
Questions?
It's not questions now.
Always have questions in there.
It's my first in town, it's cool, go ahead.
No, no, this is a reference to, this, oh, buddy. Good morning. The question is a reference to the program, you know, ROTC, and I'm concerned about the ROTC, you know, we, you know, we want to get future policemen and firemen, you know, good, but ROTC is very important in our community, which is the, this is a junior officer training course. So I know Chester High School used to have an ROTC, Wyndham has an ROTC, or Haddonburg ROTC, I'm concerned about the children of Chester. Why can't we have an ROTC program implemented in this program that they're speaking about? Thank you.
You're welcome.
As a matter of fact, in that meeting, didn't we touch on, wasn't there some mention of ROTC?
Yes, sir. There is a law governing that too, that's a court for that, so that would be...
So I'm glad you said that, of course. I have a story about ROTC too.
Move right along. I want to acknowledge a young lady who has been working here within the city with this administration for quite some time now, and some is sad to say that she's about to move to higher heights, deeper depths, and we always encourage, we always encourage persons, we always encourage persons to look to move, to move up. This young lady has been working with us here in this community for quite some time, and she's going to be sort of next, and I wanted to acknowledge her, she was one of our consultants, we consult, come on up here, brother, come on. Work is like a quiet storm, this young lady has been helping, helping us. She has been helping us dig our way out of our financial troubles, and I just heard today that you were ready to leave us and go to green and past it. But we just wanted to know, we appreciate all the hard work that you've put in, in working with, working with us here in this administration, and just don't forget us.
I will, thank you.
You're welcome. Speech.
No, it's been, it's been, I'm sure all of you have seen me around here a lot, maybe some of you more than you wanted to, but it's been a great assignment for me, and I'm gonna miss this project long.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
But this gotta be the proclamation?
Proclamation, Shakur Abdul Ali, you ready? I'm ready, you ready?
Yes.
All right. He's an outstanding service to the country and community. Whereas Shakur Abdul Ali was born and raised in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, and has made his home in the City of Chester for the last two decades. And whereas Shakur Abdul Ali is a proud US Army veteran, having enlisted in 1982 and served an expanded time of 29 years, seven, oh, I got you, seven months, 24 days active, reserves, and inactive reserves. And whereas Shakur Abdul Ali's military training has taken him all over the country, from states as close as New Jersey to as far away as California and Hawaii. Additionally, Shakur Abdul Ali has served several tours of duties that include time in South Korea, Kuwait, Iraq, Germany, Ethiopia, Kenya, Uganda, and Egypt. And whereas while serving, Shakur Abdul Ali attained a rank of Sergeant, First Class, and held the ranks of Acting First Sergeant, NCOIC, which is Non-Commissioned Officer in Charge. And whereas Shakur Abdul Ali has amassed many noteworthy accomplishments that include, but are not limited to, being a founding member of the Islamic Center of Chester, Pennsylvania, serving as a Chester Police Chaplain, holding multiple emergency certifications, certifications, being awarded 22 certificates of training, earning a humanitarian medal, and dozens of other honors and titles related to his religious beliefs and community work. And whereas Shakur Abdul Ali is an active community member who works to positively impact this area through religious teachings, activism, volunteerism, motivational speaking endeavors, and more. And whereas the Delaware County Veterans Memorial Association and Delaware County Council have selected Shakur Abdul Ali as one of its 2019 Freedom Medal recipients. For his contributions to the community and to the country. Now therefore, I, Mayor Thaddeus Kirkland, and the council members of the City of Chester congratulate Shakur Abdul Ali and all of the 2019 Freedom Medal Award winners for their bravery, service to their country, and dedication to the community, presented this 13th day of November, 2019.
Yes, my presentation.
Could you move to the middle? Thank you.
Could you move to the middle, thank you. I'm Karen Conkhor, I'm representing the Delaware County Veterans Memorial. This is Bill Kenny, he also serves with them. To win a Freedom Medal is an accomplishment. I, and he, the nominee for it wasn't for the amazing Lisa Dennis, who said to me, "I know just the person to nominate for this." So, she's the great reason why we're standing here. Um, but we do need to tell you that winning the Freedom Medal and rec, being represented as a Freedom Medal recipient is more than just your service to the nation. That's a very big part of it. But, the other part of the equation is your service to community. And you are the most deserving man that I can think of to win this. The two, Bill's a recipient also, he won a few years ago. Um, so thank you so much for everything that you do.
Yes, I would just like to add, uh, I was fortunate to get a copy of the new veterans book. And it's yours, Shakur. Very, very impressive resume, and, uh, what a wonderful recipient of this medal. The dinner is the sixth annual dinner. It's all related to that Delaware County Veterans Memorial on West Chester Pike in Newtown Square. But, they're finishing up the Hall of Prayers up there. And inside that building is comments, brief comments, from the forty-nine or fifty municipalities in Delaware County. So, it's a long, long project, it'll be ongoing for years and years. But this being the sixth dinner, uh, is tomorrow night. And Karen just told me there's five hundred and sixty tickets already sold. So, we don't know how many will walk in, whatever, but it's quite a night. Starts at six o'clock if you wanna come, and it's a great night. Very, very welcoming recipient, you know, this is a children's award, thank you.
None of this would be, none, none of this would happen, and none, none of this would be possible. Um, it's just a long journey, it's just about helping humanity. It's all about, it's not about me, it's not about you, it's about helping, uh, humanity. It's about being a trailblazer, trying to help those who are powerless. Um, my concern is not about the accolade, this is nothing, really. You know, I, I prayed, I prayed I would get mine, and just, you know, when God, you know, judged me on the day of judgment. Um, my concern is for us as human beings to live together, as human beings. I mean, we constantly, you know, we wanna go back and forth, you know, with religious, um, beliefs, uh, cultural beliefs, and, you know, but we all want humanity, you know, under God, and we will all be judged by God. And these are just some of the things that I just like to implement in my daily life as I travel locally, nationally, and internationally. Whereas though I've been all over the world, really, really all over the world. Just, you know, I was selected in two thousand and eleven to be part of a contingent, a continuing group to go to North Africa. Um, whereas they chose a Jewish rapper, he was a commander in the Navy. And they chose, uh, a captain who was the commander of the African Command. And they chose myself, Shakur Abdul Ali, from Philadelphia and Chester, Pennsylvania, to go to North Africa to represent the Muslims in the United States of America. And our task was to propagate the freedom of religion that we have here in the United States of America. Our task was to propagate the Acrehanic faith, which is, I'm pretty sure we all know, which is Judaism, Christianity, and Islam. And we all pray to the same God. And this is important that we, that our children needs to know this. You know, we constantly, we, we talking about ourselves all the time, but we need to train our children to be the same, you know, because children are led by examples. Children are, you know, they look up to their parents, and they look up to their heroes. But if we're not giving them the right guidance, you know, whereas they learn to love their brother, love their sister, do unto others as you do unto you, this basic stuff that we've learned. So, I just wanna thank the world, I wanna thank Chester, I wanna thank Philadelphia, I wanna thank my mother and my father, and I just wanna thank my family, and to me, all this is family here, all this is family. What I'm, what is happening, it's not for me, it's for our family. And I just wanna thank you from the bottom of my heart, from the city of Chester and the Delaware County Veterans Memorial Association. Thank you very much.
Mister Shakur, I just want to know, since we family, can I borrow twenty dollars? We have, um, one more presentation. A little while ago, a little, a week, maybe two weeks ago, uh, there was a, uh, a, uh, emergency situation here in Delaware County. And our firefighters here in the state of Chester responded to help those in other communities. I received a letter from Mr. Timothy A. Boyce, Director of Department of Emergency Services. And the, the letter reads like this, it says, "On Thursday evening, October thirty-first, twenty nineteen, several communities in Delaware County were impacted by unprecedented severe storms and a category EF2 tornado. Within minutes, homes were destroyed, property damaged, and lives put at risk. As the sun rose over Delaware County on the morning of Friday, November the first, the broad scope of the devastation became apparent, and the need to immediately conduct life safety, life safety assessments over a wider area became critical. Delaware County Emergency Services made an emergency request for assistance to the city of Chester Bureau of Fire and the township of Havre, Havreford Police Department, to augment now depleted first responder resources and access still yet inaccessible areas of Thornbury Township. Within minutes, Commissioner Rigby, along with firefighter Stephen Carr, Gordon Pippin, Thomas Vannelli, and I'm gonna mess your name up, Kevin. Postaway?
Postaway.
Postaway. Come listen, you guys. Postaway, responding to assist. Upon arrival, they were immediately tasked with gaining access to the heavily damaged room, uh, rumor lane area, and performing life safety assessments at homes. These brave officers and firefighters worked through debris-strooned, thrown areas, down trees, unsecured power lines, into damaged homes, um, into damaged homes to, to reach homeless confined residents. Many of the persons they reached were without the means to sa, to safety, extricate themselves from imminent danger. Their heroic actions and the bravery they demonstrated in accomplishing their mission without doubt led to outcomes that reduced injuries, secured hazards, and protected at-risk victims. On behalf of the people of Delaware County, I thank the city of Chester for answering the call for help, and for the exceptional leadership of Commissioner Rigby, the proficiency of skills demonstrated by your responders, for the dedication of your fire department, the courage and the compassion of your firefighters saved lives, and it is credited to your great city." Come on, Kevin. Just wanna say on behalf of council myself, we appreciate the fact that you go above and beyond in calling you. And it's not just here in the city of Chester that you respond, but you go beyond, so, to Delaware County. And we thank you so, so very much.
Thank you.
Say so.
Uh, first, first off, I'd like to, uh, thank the city for their commitment. As, uh, our emergency services, along with the police department, we've, uh, moved into specialty emergency services with technical rescue, ASMAT, and we've partnered with the, uh, with Delaware County. And Chester has taken the lead on all these projects. And I thank the commitment from council, the command staff from the police department, and, uh, without, you know, the county's been able to give us some great training that we weren't maybe able to get. And, uh, this was a perfect example of what happens when we can help somebody else, so, it's a great thing. Moving forward.
Hit it, Ken.
Hit it, Ken.
I guess all, all I really have to say is that, thank you to council and Delaware County Emergency Services for calling these extra opportunities, because we obviously wouldn't have been deployed to help out those people in Thornbury, uh, in that area where there was a lot of severe damage in just a matter of minutes. Uh, and they were extremely appreciative of our time and our efforts, uh, while we were there. And, uh, thank you all, stay good.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. At this time, we open up the microphone for public comments. If you have public comments, we actually, if you go to the microphone, state your name, your address, and your public comments.
Good morning. My name is Angie Johnson, I'm the president and director at the Boys and Girls Club. The Boys and Girls Club is celebrating eighty-nine years of service to youth in Chester. Everybody can say eighty-nine years. So, some of these are some of the activities that took place in the month of November in October. Chester Upland School District participated in a Pennsylvania Youth Survey, which is known as PACE. It was sponsored by the Pennsylvania Department of Crime and Delinquency, the Pennsylvania Department of Education, the Pennsylvania Department of Drug and Alcohol Programs. The survey asked questions about behaviors of students in the sixth, eighth, tenth, and twelfth grades. Included questions about school climate, violence, depression, bullying, and substance abuse. On ten twenty-eight, Chester High School completed sixty surveys. On ten twenty-nine, STEM completed a hundred and forty-eight surveys. And on ten thirty-one, Toby Farm completed a hundred and eighty-two surveys. November first, Stetser completed nineteen surveys. All fourteen, all four hundred and nineteen surveys were sealed and delivered back to the Department of the PACE. We also had our Red River Week, and our message this year was say, was "Stay Drug Free." The Red River Campaign is the oldest and largest drug prevention program in our nation. It reached over a million kids during this week. The Boys and Girls Club began their week with a family engagement night. We have board games, music, arts and crafts. And we also have a new twenty-two-foot inflatable TV screens where we play the movie. We had over a hundred and eight people in our building. And we had a hundred and sixty-five pledges that people say, signed to be drug free. And if you would like to sign a pledge, please come over to the Boys and Girls Club, because our goal is to have five hundred done by the end of this month. The Boys and Girls Youth Leadership Team is having a town hall meeting. It's on November fifteenth at five-thirty at the Boys and Girls Club. This is our youth leadership team, we have eight young individuals that's been in Texas and Florida, and had a chance to learn strategic planning and the mapping of Chester. So here they're gonna talk about the hotspots where they see resources, and educate us on Chester, because we wanna make a change, but we can't make a change until we hear what they have to say. So please come out and support our young people as they present our town hall meeting on Friday at five-thirty. We also have an annual Thanksgiving feast on November nineteenth at four-thirty, all is welcome. And as you can see, these are all the activities that we take, that take place at the Boys and Girls Club. So we're asking all you guys to come out and help us celebrate our annual fundraiser, because it's eighty-nine years and we're trying to make it to ninety-one. So that's gonna be at Lathan Hall at Wyndham University on November twenty-first at six PM. All tickets are seventy-five dollars, but we know you guys support us in all of our activities, so hopefully we can get a couple tables for five hundred dollars. Um, and some of the money goes to some of our programs, somebody just asked me some of our programs. So let me tell you what your money will be going towards. We have Power Hour at the Boys and Girls Club, that's where we have half an hour of educational tutoring. We have scuba, there's scuba diving, we have nine young individuals that became certified scuba divers and two skin divers. We have arts and crafts, we have Music Topia, we have young people that started out playing guitars and drums. We have robotics, we have lyrical math, we have positive action, which is social emotional learning. We had a seventy-sixers math program. We have teen night every Friday night at the Boys and Girls Club. But we have a total of twenty-three to a hundred youth that comes every Friday night. And they do thirty minutes of a workshop, and we have fun afterwards. We have our garden program, and we have the biggest after-school program here. So, thank you, and be supportive of our programs, and come out, see our young people on Friday. You know, I work with the teens, so I'm gonna keep saying, please come to our first town hall meeting where they can talk about their choices in Chester. Thank you, guys.
Good morning. Yes, assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wa barakatuh. And the rest is blessed, may the Lord be it. And certainly, I, I, my name is Armin, I do this sitting, I do it kind of a street. Now, if you will, sir, let's be grateful what is in all of our hearts that our Lord wants us to, um, reach and, and, and to, uh, work with, to benefit, to, uh, to really, uh, get great blessing that you want. Can one of us all, you know, to feel good in a paradise way, and when you do good, you know, the worst types of deeds, and certainly, we all can feel that, we all are great in that area. And so this is what I, I, we, we, what our soul to feel, along with the other, other deeds that we have, uh, done. So, and connected back to our Lord, and the way that he wants to be, uh, connected back to. You know, this is what this all is, is about. We, we hear many assessments of debauchery that's coming upon the people, and, uh, we can say, yeah, we feel that, that there's only one assessment, one, God, heaven, one, heaven. Because God is doing something with us that he wants us to know what he's doing. And, uh, and a book, a part of my book, Mike Quay, sir, said that, "When you come to help of God, you will see the people coming into God's religion, religion, and crafts, and crafts." So this is appealed to the heart, is, you know, they're coming and relating, it's actually me, realigning, realigning, realigning ourselves back to true form, to true form. And so this is by the rest of God, it's done by our Lord. So we want to say, there's much to be said as we are awakening more to the remembers of our Lord. Let's say February day, they have a big issue, they're so big that in memorization, uh, in a lot of this, uh, memorization, a lot of it, is causing, uh, great pain on even, uh, you know, the elderly leads at this day here, that we hear that you're taking so many pills, you know, opioids and all that. So we want to change this, we, we want to change this. It says, it's just something said back to, to it like that, "My country is a deep..." It says, it's something said back to, like that, "My country tis a deep," so now, "Sweet land of liberty." So now, "My country, my country, my country, tis a deep, tis a deep, is a God. As long as it is a God, everyone who participates is a God. I, my country, tis a deep," keep it like that, "Sweet land of liberty, of liberty, free." Old folks say this, straight up the fly, right? So we're flying with a lot of poohsiness that, that man has gotten, feeling good, spiritual and all sorts of stuff. So we want to feel good about what our Lord has said what's to feel good about, so this is where we're coming to, this, where we are coming to. Abraham Lincoln said, in the, in the Gettysburg Address, he said, "Look, you are fighting for this now, but tomorrow you'll be fighting for something else." So this is what we want to be fighting for. Sir, I hear the bell, there, and, so I pray that you, council, have good, and you continue going, and be well, sir, you're going to feel good, and we appreciate it, sir.
Appreciate you, Mr. Sir. Didn't know you were a vocalist.
Thank you, sir. I would go more.
Kind of skills.
Seeing, and outside the podium, I do want to, um, do, sir.
Good morning. I just want to make an announcement. This week, tomorrow, and Friday, we will be having our national consultants, NBBJ, who will come to the city of Chester in our community room. The consultants are here, we were hired within a grant that we got, mayor and council, and from some other partners within the city of Chester, for hired consultants to come in and do a master, a waterfront master plan for the development of our waterfront. But in order for that to be completed, we want to make sure that we open it up for discussion with our community, with our neighbors, all the business leaders and constituents in the city of Chester. We want to make sure that whatever is put in this master plan, development that we believe may be fit for the waterfront, that our constituents have a say-so in that. So this Thursday, 11/14, from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and also Friday, 11/15, from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM, in the Chester City Hall Community Room, our, the consultants, NBBJ, will be here to speak with residents, and business leaders as well, to hear about our vision of what we think may be, may fit and be beneficial to our, to our city of Chester. So please mark your calendars and come on out and make sure your voice is heard. Thank you.
Shakur Abdul Ali, 14 East 7th Street, Chester, Pennsylvania. My question is for the Boys and Girls Club. I know we have a lot of young people over there, affordability for adm, adm, members.
Membership.
Yes. So are all children able to contribute without not having a membership?
So a membership at the Boys and Girls Club is fifty dollars a year. A lot of our young people and parents have fifty dollars a year, and the wonderful Ms. Janet Riley Ford opened the door, so we do let our young people come in, and we try to do some kind of payment plan, because we do have to have staff and everybody working to make sure our kids are safe at night. So yes, a membership is fifty dollars a year.
And the reason why I'm asking on this, you know, concern, personally, I would like to start some type of drive where we can kind of like get funds for the young people that do not or cannot afford, and if we can contribute, you know, something maybe like a dollar a day or something, and we can have funds for those young people that cannot afford to come. Because I'm, you know, my concern is about the young people. It's all about the young people, you know, the ones that want to follow us. That's why I'm concerned about the RMTC program and all the other programs that we have going on. So I want to help start that drive, you know, we can at least, you know, have some money set aside for the young people that cannot afford to go. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll just add.
And that's the conversation we're going to have on Friday with our young people. I couldn't have people come out of school with that, but they are going to ask for, "How can we have fundraisers to make sure the Boys and Girls Club is still standing?"
Okay, because you're, Mr. Ali, don't start us up. Very simple point. Right, I meant to mention this very quickly, sir, very, very quickly. You know, we have deep concerns, deep concerns, deep, not shallow surface concerns, Allah, what God wants to, twenty-two, deep, these deep concerns that he's getting us in touch with. And so this is what it wants to be, this brother, this man, he's, we have as Muslims, Muslim American, you know, Veterans Association. And certainly, you know, we want the society to feel the, the ingredients, you know, that to put itself in nice feet with the ingredients of us. So I just wanted to give the brother a little, a little recognition here.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Thank you. As far as our young people, we hope that we can encourage them, put it this way, I got a ton of leaves around my house. It's called urn. Ton of leaves. There are senior citizens with leaves there, persons that need their grass cut, persons that need their car washed. Start encouraging these young people to earn it. They'll feel better afterwards with themselves. I don't have my money given away. With that said, I got a whole bunch of leaves in my yard. With that said, just, just, just wanted to say this, because I don't know, someone said they might have saw a blurb, very briefly, but history was made in Delaware County. But I want to congratulate my colleagues on council, for making history in our own way. And I want to thank the folks, the people of Chester, for their support in our continued efforts at being mayor and council. Little history was made there, but it wasn't talked about. We, we didn't have any opposition, which means we must be doing something right. So we want to say we appreciate all those who came out and supported of us on the election day. And I want to congratulate my colleagues for a job well done. And with that said, before Shakur Abdul Ali gets back up, this is a little bit of a challenge.[1797.15]